Ah, very good.
They multiply.
Temptation. When I'm skinny as you, then I'll keep a hold of that. That's gonna be a while.
Did you change the DOT, the roads at con?
I forgot fully. Uh, no, I didn't change it.
Okay.
Check the date, never forgot what it was. As you said, there was only one date that worked for today.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council study session for May 29, 2018. We'll begin with roll call. Danny, you lead.
Thank you, Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Presente.
Councilmember Trout, Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wales.
Excused. Okay. Don't think we have any announcements or reports or presentations, so we'll move into the agenda item 3A, which is the SR 167 and SR 509 Gateway Project. Ingrid.
So, good evening. For the record, Ingrid Galb, Assistant Director of Engineering, City Engineer, and with me tonight is Craig Stone with Washington State Department of Transportation to talk to you about the Puget Sound Gateway Project. You might recall, back with Connecting Washington, this project was approved with potential for local share of up to $130 million within all jurisdictions that potentially benefit from this. So Craig's gonna go through a lot of the work that's been done over the last year, year and a half, with all of the various agencies about how we're going to address the $130 million funding requirement from the local agencies.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I am the program administrator, so I oversee what we call Puget Sound Gateway, which is part of 509 up in South King County, but also completing 167 in Pierce County. I know up to this point, the city has been very interested in 167. A former mayor was very engaged with some of the coalition work that made this project happen for going forward. But I do want to give you a little bit of an overview, if I could, here on the slides. You do have in front of you kind of a folio that we use for information. Ingrid is also providing to you an assessment that we have, kind of looking at, well, what are the benefits to the city? And then there's actually the memorandum of understanding that we're proposing to have forward here for your consideration, that also legislature would like to have responded back to by July 1st. So that's the kind of timeline that we're on right now. Just going up to 30,000 feet, kind of looking at this, the reason it was called the Gateway Program is really to encourage the idea of movement of freight. We have the ports that work now with the Northwest Seaport Alliance. They effectively are the fourth-largest containerized cargo port in the nation. They compete with Savannah for who's third and who's fourth. No one can compete with Long Beach and New York, so they're really the big dogs. But very important aspect, obviously, family wage jobs come from the port, a lot of materials come through, but also it's interesting, a lot of that distribution of that freight comes up, whether you call it the Green River, White River, Puyallup River Valleys, the second biggest in the West Coast from a warehousing industrial area, and some have said fourth largest in the nation, too. So we're very trade-dependent. We're the second-most trade-dependent state in the nation here. Also, part of this project, up in the 519 part, is the, working with the Port of Seattle, it will be ultimately a south access into airports. All the trips, south airport, instead of having to go up the south center and go around the north end and come in that way, we'll have an opportunity to come from the south end. And so we're working with them on what we would call south access. The airport being the fastest-growing airport the last three years in the nation, and the third-largest fastest-growing in the world. So you can just tell what's happening in our region, and transportation is so important to us. So everything we've been trying to do is consistent with comprehensive plans and visions of the Puget Sound Regional Council, but also understand the community. So we have community interests, we have regional interests, we have state interests, we have national interests with this project coming together. Far as the kind of geography here, it's interesting, we're working with 18 jurisdictions, from Berrien to Puyallup to Tacoma here. Obviously Auburn is part of that, and part of that mix of those 18. That includes the two counties, includes the two ports that we have. We're also working closely with manufacturing industrial centers, so just the south of you, obviously, you have the Sundar Pacific area, Kent, but Auburn itself has a lot of obviously that type of work here and jobs and so forth and distribution. So it should be important to the city, too, from that standpoint. 167, just kind of a really quick overview, it's in your folio there. A lot of people realize you get down to Meridian and Puyallup, it just ends. It's always envisioned to go over to Tacoma, for at least since the late 50s and early 90s, there was environmental work done. It's taken a long time to get to this place, about 25 years, working with the idea of how can we complete the corridor? But you see here in this graphic, on your right-hand side, there's Meridian Interchange. Will be four lanes from that going over towards I-5. There'll be a half interchange, what we call Valley Avenue. It helps serve that Puyallup, Fife warehousing area. You go over I-5, there'll be connections at I-5. You go over towards the Port of Tacoma, and you tie into State Route 509 that's actually in the tide flats there. So it's about six miles in length as a facility itself, just a little bit over a billion dollars to invest in this, right-of-way construction as we're working through this. But it also has an effect on 167 traffic up and down the corridor. So we actually see some reductions of traffic on 167, which might almost be counterintuitive to you. You'd say, well, if you're completing it, that should put more traffic on. And we've had some of your sister jurisdictions kind of asking those questions. What's happening in our models or forecasting, we're looking at the years 2025 and 2045, there are trips are coming in south of the 167 area. Right now, they have no choice. They try to go up the valley, whether they're trying to go up West Valley, they're trying to get 167, they're trying to get up somehow in the morning and opposite-going in the evening. This actually gets them over to where maybe they want to go. And so we're actually seeing some reductions in the 167 area, so we'll talk about that just in a moment. I had the 519 slide put in here because we do the improvements from just on the west side of the airport. We come into I-5, we come down to what we call the Kent-Demoyne interchange on CRL 516. But we also add auxiliary lane all the way down to Star Lake, a 272nd. So as 272nd comes down the hill, turns into 277, that becomes kind of like your northern border. So I thought it was important to recognize that there's actually benefits to Auburn to the north, as well as benefits to Auburn to the south from these facilities coming into play. This is an assessment, so this is just a overview of what we provided to you here. And we tried to look at travel times, and kind of as you read through that, there are benefits of going south to the port area of freight movements and trips. The blue lines represents traffic areas that will actually reduce, that will see some reductions. The red is where we see a little bit of increase in traffic. Now, this is over a full day, looking at it. You can kind of look at that in the front back. We had a Birken Associates who do economic development or econo studies look at this, and we did 18 of these for all the jurisdictions, so they can have it, be informed about, well, how does gateway work, and are they benefiting from that investment at all? So this is just legislative direction that we have. It is a single corridor. For the funding for this, it came out of the Connecting Washington Program, which is a gas tax. And what happens in one part of the project is affected by the others. So we're working together with our stakeholders. We have an exec committee, we have a steering committee, so you have effectively your electeds on the executive level, your staff on the steering committee, and we're working together with those jurisdictions. There's actually 25 jurisdictions that we're working with. More detail here, one of the things the legislature asked, while there was an understanding that there would be some local contributions coming to it, they asked the Secretary of Transportation, which in some ways means me, to work with the secretary, to come up with some understanding here by July 1st that would define, if there's $130 million contribution, how would we go about doing that? What would that look like? And so we wanted to speak to that tonight. We also are looking at opportunities to accelerate the project, and so that gets into, we know we can build it a lot faster, industry can build it a lot faster, but it does come down to cash flow, and just how will that work? So by the summer, we'll work through that. This is a slide I like to show. These are the four major funding sources that we see. So the state is a gas tax-based. I like to tell people, you actually have to buy your gallon of gas for us to actually collect the revenue, to actually go towards it. The legislature is not bonding this program, it's more kind of a page-a-go, so the funds will come in between 2015 and 2031. So it is a 16-year program. There is a toll component to this. In the early years, it did not have toll component, but now we're looking at that element. It would be not like the hot lanes that you have already on 167, it would really be more like 520, where it is every lane is told, be higher during the peaks, lower in the off-peak, be time of day type tolling, but it does help fund the program. We do have a major federal application in at the Trump administration, the US DOT, beginning that northern tier states, all the way from Illinois and Wisconsin, Minnesota, also see this as a benefit, because again, this is kind of like that last connection to the Asian market, and we're competing with Canadian ports also for going forward. And then we get to the $130 million local contribution. And again, when this package was being put together in 2013, 14, and 15, there was a coalition to say, yes, we can meet there, we could do this. So then it came to the question being, how would we do that, and what would it look like? So now we're focusing on the memorandum of understanding. This is a construct that was put forward, so the ports are looking to contribute 30 million each into this program. We're looking at the federal grant, about 20 million for there. We look at the local partner match, about 20 million, and then we're pursuing grants, so grants such as Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board, Transportation Improvement Board, which are state programs, Puget Sound Regional Council, which distributes federal dollars, and trying to bring that together. And so we're at a place now that we've defined now, how would we get to that place? We've also broken out the jurisdictions into tiers, knowing that some jurisdictions get a lot more benefit directly, such as a ramp or access to a particular area of their city. We have others that are getting some benefits, and then we have other tier-three cities that we know there's generalized benefits, but not specific benefit. And that's where Auburn is. You're in that tier-three area. Well, what does that mean? Effectively, we're asking for support for the project, we're looking for grants, letters of support, you provide the support before. And here's Steve Gorsester, part of our work on these grants. And yet, the tier-one and tier-two cities are the ones we're actually asking for actually a contribution, whether it be land, or whether it be actually an investment in the program. Do you want to just dive right into this one?
Sure, sorry.
Steve Gorsester, you might introduce yourself here.
Sorry. Steve Gorsester, project consultant, I must have had the wrong time. Glad to be here. Looks like you're already on the section of this that I cover. So we're employing a strategy of raising grants to try to reduce the burden of the project on our local funding partners. And the grant strategy has been used to negotiate an arrangement with the funding partners that are actually contributing money, that they would put up the match to the grants we're attempting to raise. And so that has worked out pretty well. We have almost all of our funding partners now that receive direct benefit from the project, have agreed to contribute, for the partners that receive larger-scale benefits in the range of about $2 million apiece, and the partners that receive some special benefit, but not maybe direct access to the facility, have agreed to contribute about $500,000 each. And then the ports, the two ports, have agreed to contribute $30 million each to the match required for the project. And that has already put together about $73 million toward the funding that the legislature is expecting the local government partnership to raise. And so we are in the process now of pursuing a variety of state and federal grants that traditionally fund these types of projects, using that local match that I showed you on the previous page as the foundation and as the partnership money that's necessary to drive some of the match criteria, some of the grant criteria. And we have already submitted four significant grants, and we have received at least fairly certain funding from three of them, which is a very, very good rate of success. That success occurs mainly because you have good projects that fit the criteria well. You have funding partnerships, and you have match that is available to put up the rest of the money to show that the grant agency that you'll achieve full funding and be able to build. So overall, as you can see in the far-right column here, these are grant numbers that have pretty much panned out already. We have another one that we think we're in a good position for, that we're supposed to hear about on Friday. So the strategy of using the local partner match to enter into a funding partnership with local governments seems to be working relatively well. The balance of the funding to build the projects comes from the state, from the WashDOT budget, from the Connecting Washington Fund, and that gives us the ability to go forward and look for these grants with good, strong certainty that the projects will actually raise all of the money they need in order to go to construction. It's very important for us to put this partnership together, because while this is a long-term project, we're actually breaking ground on this project in a year. We're building the first sub-element of the project, 70th Avenue East in Fife, and that's a pretty short timeframe for the amount of money we're trying to seek and the time that it takes to raise the grant funds, which is why we've really got to get this local partnership nailed down and show the legislature that we can accomplish what was expected. And it looks like, I believe now, we have a very good chance that this will pan out and be pretty successful. So, yes?
Good question. What's the timeframe that you have to have everybody commit their amount of money?
Well, that's in fact a great segue to this slide. The memorandum of understanding is the document that we're circulating with local government councils right now, including yourselves. And the MOU is the vehicle to document the partnership, to identify the local match that we're putting up, and to demonstrate in July to the legislature that we have a way forward on the local funding partnership. So this is where we document what match will be contributed by our local partners.
So if I can add to that real quick?
Sure.
So that's basically committing the intent to that. For those that are providing funding, there'll actually be another interlocal agreement between the state and those individual agencies to actually commit the full funding amount through that interlocal agreement.
Exactly. And I was just about to say that between now and the end of this year, the funding partners that get earliest-stage construction, the ones that get project elements first, will have interlocal agreements that are required before any transaction occurs around the funding that is being committed through the MOU.
That is the full $500,000 that our city has committed?
So our city, as a tier-three city, has not committed any funding?
Okay, well, that is, I see that certain cities all have a price on it, and ours was $500,000, so.
Our city wasn't listed.
No, our city hasn't been listed in here. Oh, additional signatories over on the...
Okay, okay.
I can see exactly what you were looking at. We will accept the $500,000. So there were three tiers, as are shown here, and for the most part, tier-one agencies receive direct access to the new facilities. So ramps get built from the gateway projects into town, right? That's Fife, the project comes right into town. In Kent, there's a connection of a major arterial right into the gateway project. So those cities are in tier-one. In tier-three, the cities that are in that category mostly receive just regional benefits like any other city who maybe wasn't even a partner, right? So in the case where there wasn't a unique benefit established between the project and the partner, we're just asking for your support to the MOU, so that the legislature knows that the local partnership is sticking together. And this is the slide that talks about the interlocal agreements. And because you're a tier-three partner and you're signing to show support, there wouldn't be an interlocal agreement here. And so now we'll talk a little bit about some of the project impacts.
Just want to kind of finish up here a little bit. Ingrid had asked that we look at traffic benefits, might say, this is actually the interchange at 18 and 167 as it exists right now. And so we just said 2025 in the morning, with 2025 in the evening. And green makes it, basically, the darker the green, the more travel time benefit you have. You go into the red area, you'll actually see a dis-benefit, a little bit extra time. So you're generally seeing in the morning time there, people going up Peaslee Canyon, it's like it's probably about five, maybe five minutes or so, you have to look at it closely, so forth. Right there, the little orange is actually down there in West Valley. So West Valley itself actually sees a reduction, but what we saw is traffic filled back in that maybe want to be more local and come into that area. So there might be an area there, especially on that Wescon off-ramp down to the signal there, and signal timing, so there's an area we have to look at. But in general, what we're seeing here is you should see some benefits there. Now, that said, we're continuing to grow as a region, so you're always going to be challenged with that. So don't walk away with, oh, hey, everything's take care of here, but it does show some benefits generally at that particular interchange. And then this is the schedule for the projects. Steve mentioned, our actually first project in Fife goes next year, but it is, we have different places where we go to construction. 2021 is a major timeframe for those jurisdictions, we'll have interlocals with them, we need to make sure they're done before we go to construction in 2021, even though they'll pay kind of as we do the work. And then 2026 is the next kind of phase that we have, and then that will also be set up for going forward. So that's just the quick overview we had. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, and also if there's any other further questions you might have.
Any other questions for the panel?
If I can do one little bit of closing, so that memorandum of understanding you'll actually see on the council agenda next Monday for actual action. So as Craig and Steve mentioned, as a tier-three city, there is no funding commitment that we are agreeing to. We are basically agreeing to support the grant applications that the program is looking to file, as well as attend and participate in the project meetings, so that we stay up to date on what's going on with the overall program.
Councilmember DeCoursey. Is King County is participating at this time in the funding? There is a benefit to King County?
Yeah, we're working with both counties, and Pierce County stepped up with the $2 million. We're working with King County specifically. So the county executive will be signing on with this, they're working through financially how do they get there. So there's different mechanisms that they have, and between the road funds, or metro funds, or general funds, we're even talking about some trail elements and everything. So we are working through that. I anticipate them to continue to be part of a tier-two, they'll have some contributions to this. That's a question we frequently get. It is interesting, Craig's observation, Pierce County, this project is like number one, it's a very, very high priority. You come into King County, there's so many other things going on, it's hard to believe there's a billion-dollar project up on 519, coming down into the Federal Way area that doesn't get top billing. So it's a lot of interest, so the city could also express maybe that, and that might be helpful as we go forward. But at this point, we are in conversations with the county.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Forward in the future. Okay, moving right along here. Ingrid and James, I believe, were going to talk to us about the 2019 and 2024 Transportation Improvement Plan Annual Update.
Yes. So I'm going to let James go ahead and kick it off.
Okay, so for the record, James Webb, City of Auburn Traffic Engineer. So in your packet, you have a cover memorandum that summarizes the changes, and then there are individual sheets for all of the new projects which are proposed to be added to the tip as part of the annual update. So this is a process that we go through once a year, is required by the state. We need to update and adopt the revised tip by the end of June. So this is the first time that you're seeing this as a study session. There will be a follow-up council meeting to discuss it on a more formal basis and set the public hearing. There'll be a second review at study session, and then there will be, at the second council meeting, the hearing itself and adoption of the tip. So the tip is a six-year document for planning transportation projects. The first three years, so in this case, 2019, 20, and 21, need to be financially constrained. You can only program funding that we reasonably expect to have. Years four, five, and six do not have that financial constraint requirement on them, so we can include some other kind of larger projects without specifically having to show how we intend to fund them. So the first section of the memo just is basically a list of the projects that were included in the previous tip, which are being removed, so I'll quickly run through those. So the first one is tip, it was tip project number two, which was a signal improvement project. That was combined with another signal improvement project, which was included in the previous tip as project number 19, and has been renumbered in the new tip as project I-1, and I'll get to the new numbering convention when we're done with the deletions. Tip 12 was a project that proposed to create a new grade-separated connection across the BNSF rail yard. That's a project that we're proposing to remove from the tip as part of this update. It will remain in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We didn't feel it was appropriate to leave it in the tip because of the timeframe associated with that project. Tip 14 is A Street Southeast Signal Safety and Traffic Operations. That's currently in design, will be complete, construction of that project will be completed by the end of this year, so that's being removed from the tip for that reason. Tip 15, which is Eighth Street Northeast Widening between Pike Street and R Street, that has been combined with the first phase of the Lee Hill Road Corridor Project, which we're currently working on consultant agreement for the study for that entire corridor. Tip 19 is signal improvements at Auburn Way North and First Street. That is the other project that got combined and is being turned into more of a programmatic signal replacement project in the new tip. Tip 21 is West Main Street, C Street Traffic Signal Improvements. Those will be completed by the end of this year, so are being removed from the tip. Tip 24, the Academy Drive Multi-Use Trail Project, is being removed because it's not anticipated to be started within the next six years. That's another project that remains in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan in the unmotorized section. Tip 53 is Auburn Way South and 12th Street Southeast Intersection Improvements. Those will be completed this year as well. The Auburn Way South Sidewalk Improvements on the north side of Auburn Way South will also be completed this year, as will preservation of 15th Street Northeast-Northwest. So a lot of these projects are coming off because we're either currently in design or actually in construction of those projects, and they'll be completed by the end of this year.
Councilmember Pelosi.
When will tip 21 begin?
Tip 21, C Street, that is currently in design. I don't believe it's gone out to adjet.
Actually, it has, and it has been awarded, so they are waiting on the materials to start construction.
Because that's been a controversial intersection for years, because isn't it true that long-haul trucks, the 53-footers, have a hard time turning?
So this isn't necessarily going to change the radius turning movements there, this is addressing the signal itself, which needs to be replaced, and doing some improvements to the signal itself. We are making a few channelization improvements there to help with some of those turning movements, but that is, that right turn from southbound to westbound, because the proximity of the building, there is not enough space within that road widening unless we purchased that building and relocated that business.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I think I'm going to jump ahead a little bit. If you go to the top of page three in the memo, it talks about the new numbering system. I think it'll make more sense to cover that before we talk about the new projects. So the current tip and the previous documents have just included all of the projects with a numerical designation, one through typically we're somewhere in the seventy range for the projects. And then in the document themselves, those are broken into different chapters for the different types of project. So you could have in the non-motorized chapter, project one, seven, thirty-six, and seventy-two, which, when you're trying to find those projects, makes it very difficult to track. I'm sure some of the council members that are on the ad hoc committee have discovered that from their review of the existing document. So as part of this year's update, we're taking the opportunity to renumber all the projects. So it will be very clear by looking at the number assigned to a project, the type of project, and where to quickly find it in the document. So the the kind of the the chapters that we've been using are consistent with the titles that we're proposing as part of this update. So we still have intersection signal and I T S projects. We still have non-motorized and transit projects together, preservation roadway, and then study and monitoring projects. What we're proposing to do, instead of just using a number, is combine a letter and a number. So intersection and signal projects will be I to designate the type of project, and then the number associated with that. And then non-motorized and transit projects will have an N followed by a number. And there'll be a a one project in each category and a two project in each category. So instead of having everything be one through seventy, whatever, you'll have N, I one through ten, N one through twelve, P one through six. So we think that's going to make this a lot more user-friendly in terms of being able to find the projects that you're looking for in the document. So now, we will go back to the projects that are being proposed to be added as part of this update, and the attachments included to the memo include the draft tip page for each project and a map showing the location of each project. So the first is tip I one. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Will the maps also be numbered the same way as the N one or P one or something like that?
So in in this handout, the the figures are titled to match the project. We're not proposing to add a map for each project to the tip. However, there is a an eleven by seventeen map that's included at the end of the document, which shows the location of all the projects, and that'll be updated to be consistent with the project pages.
Okay, thank you.
So the first project is I one, so intersection signal project number one. This is this replaces the two projects which are being deleted from the tip, which were the A Street Signal Improvements and the Auburn Way North and First Street Northeast Signal Improvement Project. This is proposed to be a programmatic project that will be used to replace existing signals when they reach the end of their lifespan. So you'll see that the first intersection proposed to be replaced is the Auburn Way North and First Street Northeast Signal. That was constructed in nineteen sixty-eight, so it's very old infrastructure. It's one of the oldest signals in the city, and it needs to be basically replaced with a new signal. And then the second one, which is proposed for design in twenty twenty-four and likely construction in twenty twenty-five, would be the East Main and Auburn Avenue Signal, which again was constructed in nineteen sixty-eight. So those are our two highest priorities for this program. And then we'll we'll propose, as the tip moves forwards, to identify the third and the fourth signals based on age or other needs that will be added to the program when these initial ones get taken care of. So this will be an ongoing program. The second project, which is proposed to be added, is I seven, so another intersection project. This is the construction of a roundabout up on Lee Hill at the intersection of one hundred and sixteenth and three twentieth. This is a being broken out from part of a larger corridor project and is a project that we've submitted an application for grant funding for this year. So we needed to break it out to be consistent with the grant program. The intersection's currently stop-controlled on the one hundred and sixteenth Avenue approaches and was included as part of tip forty-two, which was that corridor project included in the previous tip. So the corridor project remains on the tip. We just pulled the roundabout component out to be able to more competitively pursue grant funding for it.
Councilmember Pelosi.
So that'll slow the Green River students down, won't it? It should.
A roundabout on this corridor will have traffic calming benefits.
Better than a, did you study a four-way stop as well before you went to this direction?
We we didn't look at an all-way stop because of the potential sight distance issues with the crest to the east and the.
Sight distance.
Engineering.
So so sight distance is the ability to see.
Oh, I I know what I know it is, but I don't understand why you negated sight distance, because I drive there all the time, and I don't I don't understand what you mean sight distance as a problematic.
So there's a crest in three twentieth as you come down the hill.
Right.
So a stop sign for that corridor would be less desirable than the roundabout, because a vehicle needs greater sight distance to be able to come to a complete stop than it does to slow down to enter the roundabout. So we were concerned about that. There are also warrants that would need to be met to make this an all-way stop controlled intersection, and based on the amount of traffic that uses one hundred and sixteenth, it's very unlikely that those warrants would be met.
I don't understand what you mean by warrant.
So there are a set of thresholds that are a national standard that for a signal, to to put in a new signal or to put in a stop sign or make an existing intersection all-way stop controlled, we have to evaluate to determine if that's the appropriate traffic control for that situation. And there are numerous warrants that look at safety, sight distance, traffic volumes, levels of service, that we have to evaluate when we make changes. And based on the amount of traffic that enters the intersection from one hundred and sixteenth from those side street approaches, it's very unlikely that the warrants for all-way stop control would be met. What would happen if we were to put all-way stop control and if it were not warranted is the people that use three twentieth then would likely not obey those stop signs, because there's no, they don't see a need for them to stop. So that then creates more safety issues than putting in the stop signs would solve.
You may also.
I don't understand that logic either.
So you may also recall from when we did the presentation on the twenty-second I Street Roundabout that a four-way stop actually creates a lot more conflict points for both pedestrians and vehicles than what a roundabout creates. So from that safety standpoint, it is a better solution to the intersection issue that we have and allows us to keep the traffic flowing through there. Part of the issue with the sight distance would be, and what James was trying to describe is as you come over that crest on the hill, you may not actually see that stop sign in time to have enough distance to actually come to a stop. And that's what the safety concern would be, is is people wouldn't see it in time, they wouldn't stop in time.
Going west from the college.
Correct.
There's there shouldn't be any sight problem of seeing a sign there.
So the problem when you have a crest is you may not be able to see over that crest as you're coming to see that stop sign that's over on the other side of the hill. And because you need to be able to see it within a certain distance to be able to actually stop the vehicle in time. And what we're saying is that crest is too close to where that stop sign would be, that you would not be able to see it in time to stop.
Crest is going east.
Crest is to the east of the intersection.
Correct. But it's the crest is there for anybody driving.
It would seem to me putting putting in all-way signs would be a lot cheaper than one point four million that's estimated here.
And as James mentioned, it's unlikely that a four-way stop at this intersection would meet any of the warrants, so we wouldn't necessarily do that from a safety standpoint. And what you're trying to do is improve safety at this location.
Who approves the warrants?
We do as engineers.
We do the city?
City engineer.
City engineer.
Councilmember Brown.
I just was trying to make sure I understood. So when you say the sight distance, you're talking about as you're cresting the hill, heading westbound on three twentieth, coming over the hill, you're saying that the concern is is that the stop sign being located there, you would not pick that up in time perhaps to slow down enough for a safe stop? Is that what I'm hearing?
Potentially, yes. The other part of that would be you could have a queue of cars sat at the stop sign waiting to turn, which then further shortens the distance that you have to stop in.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
The third project is I eleven. So this is a project at Auburn Way South and Sixth Street Southeast that would add a new southbound right turn lane at that intersection. So this is right in front of the dunnies just south of the SR eighteen ramps. What we see is a lot of people that get off that westbound SR eighteen ramp, then immediately want to make the right turn to use Sixth to get to the A Street Corridor. So by putting in that right turn pocket, we can add some capacity and help help traffic flows through that interchange. N seven is a new non-motorized project. As I mentioned earlier, we will be removing the Auburn Way South Sidewalk Project that's on the north side of this section of Auburn Way South from the tip, basically replacing it with the same type of improvements, but on the south side of the corridor. So this is from about Howard Road, across the R Street Bridge to connect to the existing sidewalk as you get closer to McRushe Plaza Signal. Again, that's another project that we submitted for grant funding on.
Councilmember Trout, Manuel has a question.
So right now, it has a path. Is that the one that we're talking about?
So right now, you have existing guardrail along that roadway, and pedestrians have the option of walking in what is a very narrow shoulder area or going on the other side of the guardrail and walking along the top of a very steep slope. However, to get across the bridge at R Street, they need to be on the front side of that guardrail, so they have to come over that guardrail. So from an accessibility standpoint, that's that's not a good solution for somebody who's trying to get through there on a bike or wheelchair. So that's why we're looking at doing the sidewalks. And there's not great connectivity between crossing Auburn Way there, which is why while we're completing the north side sidewalk, we still want to complete the south side sidewalk.
So are we moving the guardrails closer to the road? Is that what we're doing?
No, it would be moving it the other way.
Oh, the other way. Okay, gotcha.
Next, there's another non-motorized project, N eleven. This is a Safe Roots to Schools project up on Lee Hill that would complete a variety of sidewalk nap infrastructure being completed to connect to Hazelwood Elementary School, Lee Hill Elementary School, and Rainier Middle School. Again, that's another grant application that we submitted earlier this year. P ten, new preservation project. This is A Street Southeast from Thirty-seventh Street Southeast to the King Pierce County line. If you look on the map, you'll see there's a little gap in the middle that is, there's a section of the A Street Southeast Corridor that is not City of Auburn, so we'll be skipping over that piece. This is a preservation application to King County that we submitted to grind and overlay this section of the corridor. It's a good candidate based on the condition of the pavement for that program. Eleven is another King County preservation project that we submitted for grant funding on. This would treat, refinish the pavement between West Main Street and approximately the GSA Signal, which is about two thousand feet to the south of Fifteenth Street Southwest. That was a that was a King County preservation application that was submitted earlier this year. And then P twelve was the preservation project that we identified in Pierce County for their grant program. This would repair the pavement on Lakeland Hills Way between Fifty-seventh Drive Southeast, which is where the King Pierce County line is, and the Lake Tap's Parkway Intersection to the south. And then the last project that we're proposing to add is R fifteen. This project includes a variety of safety improvements for the Auburn Way South Corridor in the vicinity of Poplar Street where Auburn Way South curves. It would include high-friction surface treatment, guardrail improvements to the driveway, illumination improvements, and a curve, electronic curve-ahead warning sign for people that are coming towards that curve from Enonclaw.
Councilmember Pelosi.
I'd like to propose adding an item to the tip, Fourth Street Southeast, between M Street and Auburn Way South, in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty time period.
So in trying to add that project in that time period, we would have to move other projects out. So that's an arterial roadway, and it wouldn't need to be funded through the Arterial Preservation Fund. And right now, in twenty nineteen, the majority of those funds are going towards some grant-funded projects that we've received, as well as a small amount that's remaining to do some patching and overlays.
I would like to see it proposed and bring it back to council and tell us what effect it would have on other projects.
Mayor Bankes.
So, Bill, this is similar to the local street program where, when we first started making improvements to those streets, roads that had not failed yet had a priority over the roads that had failed, because it's less expensive to maintain those at a decent level, whereas all of your funding would go to a failed road in that year. And then the roads that you could have preserved continue to degrade to where the PCI is is lower than you want it to be. So this is this is the exact same process as we did with the local roads. Please, if I'm incorrect, it's the exact same process. That road, Fourth Street Southeast, is going to be considerably more expensive than the projects that have grant funding available for them and that have already been prioritized for next year.
I understand that, Mayor. However, this street has been been deteriorating for years and years and years. I mean, we've got to put a stake in the ground to fix that street. It's a it's a gateway to the city off of main, off of M Street. I mean, we can just keep forgetting about this thing, keep shoving it back to the to the to the back burner, but that's not solving the street problem.
It's not being forgotten, but if you if you do that to Fourth Street, then you could very well jeopardize three or four other streets that will then go into a failed condition because we didn't preserve those. We already know the condition of Fourth Street. The other roads still have an opportunity to be preserved with grant funds that have been made available. And as Ingrid has told you before, grant funding for Fourth Street Southeast is not a viable option. It does not score well on any type of grant funding program, on any of the on any of the spreadsheets or any of. on any of the, on any of the spreadsheets or any of the applications that we would ever even have an opportunity to submit.
In other words, the city would have to pick up most of the costs.
The entire bill.
So, I mean, and that would come from the preservation fund. It is a significant cost because it is a rebuild for that distance. It'd be, it'd be fairly significant change to what the program is for 2019. Keep in mind that the projects planned for construction in 2019 are already in design right now, so we would be throwing those funds away and potentially having to pay back federal grant funds to change that at this late date for it to be added to 2019.
Ingrid, are there any plans right now to, or forecast for when we could do Fourth Street?
So we, we don't, for the arterial preservation program, we don't necessarily look at forecasting out anything other than the grant-funded projects because we have to show in those grant applications that we have the matching funds to do those projects. So we try to look at what can we actually accomplish within each year of the grant programs that we're applying for. So the grants that we've put in for this year actually carry us all the way out to 2022 within the preservation program, and that leaves us a small amount each year to do patching and overlay on other streets that are not grant-eligible. Unfortunately, right now, we would have to pool several years of that to be able to get to a point where we could actually rebuild a street like Fourth Street. And Fourth Street's not the only one that needs a rebuild as an arterial street. You also have Second Street Southeast between A and Auburn Way. These are, this is part of what we were discussing previously on the condition of our arterial streets. We're at a 66 on the PCI rating as an average. We have some that are really, really bad, and we have some that are in okay condition. But it's going to take some sort of funding process to get us to where we can actually improve some of those really bad, really old streets. B Street's an example of that. We just did that this last year, but we had to pool about two to three years' worth of funding to do that roadway when we weren't doing grant projects out of that fund. So it, it takes a lot for us to build up enough cash to do that type of rebuild.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
So you're looking at it from just a rough order of magnitude then? So what would be a ballpark for doing Fourth Street?
I don't have a number off the top of my head of what that would be. We can certainly look at what that number is and bring that back during the next conversation on this, but it, it's, it's going to be in the millions.
I understand that, yeah, we kind of figured that. But yeah, it'd be helpful to kind of have some sort of a range so we know what we're looking at here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
You know, and I have to agree with that. To give us some type of a ballpark of how much it's going to cost, and so that way give us an idea on what roads is the ad hoc committee, what roads to really look at and look at funding and everything. And as we already did once before, we talked about putting money aside for stuff like this. So I have to agree, I would like to get something back for our next.
So, uh, six steps. We will be bringing the resolution to schedule the public hearing to the June 4th council meeting. We'll be back to the second, for our second appearance at study session on June 11th. We will be talking with the Transportation Advisory Board on June 12th. And then tentatively, we have the public hearing and resolution for adoption scheduled for the June 18th council meeting.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Mr. James, especially you and Ingrid as well, just want to thank you from the ad hoc committee of working so diligently, quickly to give us a more user-friendly designation for the tip projects because I know we had quite a conversation about that. Doing it this quickly is really appreciated, thank you.
Good job.
Any other questions for the panel? Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 5370, which is the Messina Presentation of Public Benefit Rating System Application.
Good evening. Jeff Tate, Assistant Director of Community Development Services. And to my left is Bill Bernstein. Bill works with the King County Department of Natural Resources and Parks Department in their Public Benefit Rating System and Timberlands Program. Did I get all that right?
You did, yes.
Good, good.
Yes.
So tonight, as part of your packet, you have resolution, draft resolution number 5370, which is the Messina Public Benefit Rating System Application. In your packet is a cover memo that I wrote. And then attached to that is the county staff report, some maps and aerial images that better describe the property. And I'm going to turn it over to Bill in just a second. But I do want to point out that in the cover memo, there's a little bit of a description about the Public Benefit Rating System and what's before council. In my time here, this is the first time that I've brought forward a PBRS application. So it's not something that we as city staff or as city council that is often before us. So the Public Benefit Rating System is a tax program that's offered under RCW 84.34. It's a program that's administered by King County. But, but lands that are within the city of Auburn, and probably within any municipality, are eligible potentially to enroll within the Public Benefit Rating System. And what the Public Benefit Rating System does is properties that are eligible under the program are able to earn points for activities that they're engaged in on their property. And when I say activity, that could range from farming to forest management. Activities could include enhanced critical area protection or stormwater management protection. There's all sorts of different criteria and eligibility. Properties that are eligible and go through the process with the county, in the end, ultimately, if the city and the county both approve the application, they're eligible for a property tax reduction. So in this case, because this particular property is located in the city of Auburn, there are a couple of different steps. And this first step, in terms of legislative action, is Resolution 5370. Right now, tentatively scheduled before city council on June 4th, that's Monday of the next week, for potential action. And if the city council approves Resolution 5370, this process, the legislative process moves back over to the county, and the county council can take action as well. But ultimately, both legislative bodies need to take action before it can move forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill to talk a little bit more about the program, anything that I missed, or anything related to the Messina obligation itself.
Thanks, Jeff. Yet Jeff really hit all of the major points that I would normally hit in a presentation. I'll just add that, as Jeff was alluding to, the majority of properties that we see apply every year are usually in the rural areas. But that being said, we do see a handful of properties come from city jurisdictions as well. I've been working this program for about 15 years, and I don't recall a property, a PBRS application from the city of Auburn. If there is one, and I'm not sure there is, it hasn't been for quite some time. A little bit of background on, on the program. Essentially, this is a, it's a point-based system, a rating system that we use to evaluate how well a property scores in the, in the Public Benefit Rating System. And so there's about 25 or so different categories that we rate properties on. And as Jeff alluded to, it doesn't matter if you're in a city or in the rural area. If you qualify for the criteria, under the criteria established in the program, you potentially are eligible for enrollment. So that being said, one of the categories that we offer credit for, which leads to potential enrollment, is landowners who are actively farming property. And that could be a number of things. There's no set criteria in terms of what that farming necessarily has to be. But the idea is that there's a historic farm use that a landowner has implemented for quite some time. And the King County sees value in conserving farmland throughout the county. And so if, if a landowner qualifies for the category criteria, which includes a certain amount of acreage, it also includes something called a farm management plan, which we coordinate with a group outside of King County called the King Conservation District. They work with the landowner to produce this farm management plan that basically puts in writing what those best management practices are going to be on the property from an agricultural perspective. And so this property is fairly straightforward. It's, it's a sheep farm. They've been doing that for decades. It's a really nice property, essentially almost all fenced sheep pasture with some associated structures, supporting structures, barns, that sort of thing. And so in the end, a pretty straightforward recommendation from, from my side in terms of the property being eligible for enrollment in the program, in this case for the bulk of the property, 8.35 acres, is what we've determined to be the area that's being actively farmed. With that, I'll leave it there, and I'm happy to answer any questions about how the program operates.
Bill, unless I misunderstood in reading the documentation, if we offer a reduction to that landowner, everyone else has to make up that difference, right?
Correct, correct. So that's, that, that's, it's essentially a tax shift that you see whereby everybody in the county simplifying things pays a little bit more in order for that person to enjoy that, that bit of tax savings, yes.
Have we calculated what roughly that might be to our taxpayers, our property owners?
Well, in this case, if you look at the staff report, let's see, I believe it's page... So page two kind of gives you a breakdown of the current values of the property, of the two parcels that are involved. And I should say that this program's all about reducing property taxes associated with land values. So we're not reducing taxes that are associated with structures, homes, areas not to be enrolled. So bolded on this page two are the two land values that we're looking at. And so a portion of those two land values and the associated taxes applied will be reduced by the corresponding, corresponding PBRS reduction. In terms of dollar amounts, it's really hard to say, you know, within this jurisdiction, what we're talking about in terms of pennies.
Well, we're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul here in some instances. Is that a, a bad analogy?
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, to, to look at it in terms of what, how the program is, is titled, Public Benefits. So I think the idea is here that everybody benefits from protecting open space, whether it be forest, farm, wildlife habitat, that sort of thing. And so there's a, there's a public benefit to encouraging this land or, or the other 1,200 landowners that are in this program to protect some valuable resources on their property and in turn offer that incentive of a tax reduction for them to do that.
If I, if I could add one thing to that and correct me if you think I'm going down the wrong path. But, uh, one of the things too is that the tax shift is not just in Auburn. So that's a county-wide tax shift. So when Bill mentioned that what is the impact to taxpayers in Auburn, and I think he used the term pennies, it probably is on the order of pennies because it does shift all the way across the entire county. And then the second thing is that there are really stiff penalties and requirements associated with the program. So I think a lot of times you could look at a quick snapshot and think, well, why are they getting a tax reduction? You know, Bill mentioned that, that in theory, the reason the state allows this program is because there are public benefits to keeping forest lands and agricultural lands and open space lands when there's outside pressures to do something else with those properties. And if you don't abide by the conditions, and in this case, the, the farm management plan, if you don't abide by those conditions, the penalties are, you know, multiple years of paying back taxes. There's penalties associated with that, there's interest on top of that. So there are a number of financial penalties in it, and I guess you could call them incentives, but they're really, they're boundaries that are placed on, on the property and the program to make sure that the person is doing all the things that they're supposed to be doing. So the public truly does end up having some kind of benefit.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, and with respect to what you just mentioned, are there other... Is the property encumbered in any other fashion, such as for estate planning purposes?
No, and so to build on what Jeff was saying, I guess the first thing I would say is properties that enroll rarely are removed, whether it be voluntarily or by county action because there was a compliance issue. So I would say that the, the enrollment rate, 95% or better in terms of, of properties that are enrolled in the program from when they started still being in the program. In terms of estate planning or change of ownership, there's a process in place, a continuance process, that, that a landowner and a buyer would go through to have the opportunity to continue with that open space agreement that's, that's in place with the county. And if for some reason there was not an interest to do that, that's where this compensating tax bill comes into play that has to be paid back. But the vast majority of the cases, whether it's, it's a change of ownership within a family or completely new ownership, usually that buyer is electing to continue in the program.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
So just looking at it from the, the reduction of the appraised value and the tax applied, what is the difference between current tax and what this would be for the new tax?
So when the property enrolls in current use, it essentially is maintaining two values. And if you looked at it, at the tax bill, if you went onto the county assessments website and did a search on a property enrolled in the program, it still maintains its assessed value, so it's not as if the property's losing its market value potential. It's just that a, a dual role is being established where there's also a current use value being maintained, and that is what the, the taxes are based upon. If the property ever came out, that current use value would go away and it would shift back to that, that market assessed value.
So does the county actually use the assessed value as the value of the land? I don't, Pierce County, they do.
Yes, the market, yes, yes.
Councilmember Holman.
What is this area currently zoned as, R-5?
It's rural conservancy. So it's the area of the city where we have our lowest density, which is one single-family residential unit per four acres.
So if we did not approve this, or at some time in the future they came out of the PBRS, this could conceivably be approximately three houses and three families.
Yeah, right now, because it's two properties, it's two separate properties, but owned by the same property owner. So there is, there is currently one single-family residential unit that's, that's there if they combine the property and...
I'm just, I'm trying to assess in my own mind the benefit for keeping this rural in nature. Less dense in that area, so we don't have as much impact on the roads, the schools.
Yeah, I mean, by staying in the program, there's a little bit of, there's, there's less development that would occur on the property. And you're maintaining something that's an agricultural activity, which quite frankly is probably difficult to maintain within a city boundary and with, even though it's in a lower-density area. I mean, you do have development and pressure that encroaches into those areas.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Yeah, Bill.
Yes.
Looking at page two.
Yes.
For the appraised value and also we talk about taxes. Going to the end here, what, what, based on what you see here, what is the forgiven tax?
In terms of a rough estimate on what these folks might see? So with regard to how the program works, we're talking about qualifying for one category. This particular category gets you at the, I guess I would say, the entry level of reduction. So based on the point, the points earned, you fall anywhere between 50 and 90 percent. These folks with the one category are falling at the 50 percent level. So that means, in a general sense, if you look at the tax-applied numbers, and they're not enrolling the entire property, so you can't even cut that tax-applied in half. But generally speaking, the savings, say, on parcel 9044 are going to be a little less than the $2,400 you're seeing there. And the same would be applied to 9061, a 50 percent reduction to that.
So, so parcel 9061 as an example. So, so parcel nine oh six one as an example would be fifty percent off of that would be about a thousand dollars? Is that how you look at it?
Correct, and it'll actually be a little bit less because not all of the acres are enrolled.
So just roughly, I took those two numbers, the twenty-four thirty-six and the two thousand eleven, added them together, times it by point eight, because it's about eighty percent of the property that would be eligible. So this isn't perfect, but it starts getting you there. And then reduce that by a half. So it's about a thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars roughly between the two properties that they experienced the reduction. And then again, you shift that thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars over, I don't know, what must be several hundred thousand properties that exist within the county. So it literally is on the order of a penny a property or two cents a property throughout the county.
Pennies, yeah. But it's also conserving land, so.
Yes.
That's the key here. Thank you, Bill.
Any other questions for the panel? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep. Thank you.
At this point in the program here, we will shift to the Health and Human Services focus area, and that is chaired by Councilmember Trout. Sure, let's take a five-minute break if we will. Thank you.
I have to go. Sorry, too much water.
How are you? I was going to ask you. 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 We're calling the meeting back to order, and I will let you go ahead and introduce the people at your table.
Hey. Thank you, Councilmember Trout, mayor, council. So we'll go from left to right, and I have Eric Brown, who is the Human Resources Director for the Alliance for South Sound in the middle. We have Maureen Woltmack, who is the CEO of the Alliance for South Sound, and we are all very familiar with Ingrid Mujia from MultiCare, here to give you an update on the Behavioral Health Hospital.
Thank you, Dana. I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure if that's a good thing that we're all familiar with, Ingrid. It's nice to see you all. I have not much to share today unless you have questions for me that I can answer. I mainly am here with these two wonderful people to give you an update on the Behavioral Health Hospital.
Okay, well, Mayor Baca, Deputy Mayor Baggett, thank you so much for having us and councilmembers. It's an honor to be here and we're excited about sharing our good news. I'm going to walk you through a little bit about the progress that we've made so far with behavioral health. Just kind of to recount, I'm sure you recall that we have had countless donors, cities, governments, individuals, foundations, and corporations, along with CHI Franciscan and MultiCare Healthcare Group that has come together to form this new Behavioral Health Hospital. And the goal of this hospital is to be a blend of the latest technology in a very healing and beautiful space. And so we're excited about the progress that we're making. We want to show you just really quickly a virtual view of the hospital and what's happening. So on your upper left-hand corner, you can see that there was an old building there on the Allen Moore campus. And as you go through the pictures, you can see that that was deconstructed, and now we're in the phase of completion. The outside of the hospital's done and they're now putting in the drywall. And so we are actually four months for construction and only thirty-six weeks away from our first patient day. It's hard to imagine, but it's coming along greatly. We are going to start what we call the activation process. That will begin on January fourth. And there's two types of operational, or operational activation, which just means we need to start looking at our processes, our policies, our procedures, ordering the equipment, getting the beds in. And then there's the facility activation. That's testing the fire system. It's testing the HVAC system. It's testing to make sure that the doors close and that they lock because we will be a locked facility. So that activation is literally just next week. That's how close we are. Again, the need, since I've been here in Washington, which has been about four months now, every day somebody comes up and talks about the need, you know, not only here, but in the country. I mean, we know overdoses from medications and drug use are skyrocketing. Suicide deaths are increasing every day, and our life expectancy for the very first time is starting to decline. There are very few state hospital beds left, and there's also some move to trying to take the state beds and turn them into forensic beds, because again, there's not enough forensic psychiatric beds, which will also make it a shortage of beds within this area. We rank forty-seventh in the least number of psychiatric beds, and so it's long overdue that we start reaching out. If that had been any other branch of medicine, say for example, you had cancer and you couldn't get a bed in a hospital, there would start to be a public outcry. And I think it's hearing that that led CHI Franciscan and MultiCare to say, you know, this is part of mainstream medicine and we need to do something about it. So what will the impacts be? Just as a reminder, the Behavioral Health Hospital will serve adults, eighteen up. And what we will do is we are basically an acute care unit. So our goal is to stabilize individuals with a mental health problem, a psychiatric illness or a substance use disorder, and then make sure that they successfully move on to a lower level of care or transition into the community. We are somewhat like an emergency room, our crisis stabilization unit on the med surgeon side. So our goal is to quickly assess people and get them to the level of care that they need. The outcomes that we want to see is we can clearly demonstrate by some research that's been done, that for every dollar invested, there will be a four-dollar return on that investment to the community through increased productivity, people being able to go back to work, less use of EDs and less incarceration. So what we will be doing is we will get people to the right place, not EDs, not jails, we'll get them seen at the right time. You know, the right time is when you feel you have an acute psychiatric need, that's the right time to get help, not when a bed becomes available. That's how we lose too many people. And then you need the right kind and the duration of treatment. You need a strong workforce that can readily assess you, get the medications you need, get the therapy you need, and step you down back into the community. And so that's what our outcomes will be, is the right place, the right time, and the right kind of treatment. So with that, you know, we will be, as I said, cutting edge. I think when people think about psychiatric hospitals, we still have that vision in our mind of padded cells and straitjackets. That's not what we're going to be. There's a picture where you'll see that it's going to be a very calming, soothing environment. It is our goal to try and be restraint-free and to promote as much dignity as we can in the healthcare for these individuals. So with that, I'm going to let Eric tell you a little bit about where we are in terms of, you know, economic development through job creation, staff, and where we're going with the staffing and how we're doing it.
Yeah, excited to be here. So when I first came on board, the focus was hiring our executive leadership team. That's so important to build culture, have our team come in, start to build their team. So I'm excited and happy to announce, so we've actually filled almost all of the positions on the executive side. Just extended an offer to a COO, and we're waiting to hear from him. So we have a picture up here of our current leadership team on the left. It's Dr. Tracy Wilson, who's our Chief Nursing Officer. Dr. Pademia is our Chief Medical Officer, who's going to be coming on board the end of July. And then obviously Maureen and myself to round out the executive team. In addition to that, I've been spending a lot of time on physician recruitment. And just to provide a little bit of context, it takes about a year to potentially hire one psychiatrist, and I'm happy to say we actually have four that are interested in coming on board to the Alliance. Not only is the volume incredible, but the talent, the caliber that we're looking to get too, we're attracting people from some of the best institutions in this country. I like to say it's all me, but it's not. You and I, my CEO, sitting here, because of the joint venture with the Alliance, they've done such a phenomenal job of getting the word out to the community. People have been waiting for this, obviously, for years. And as I post positions, I can't tell you the amount of people that have said, I've been waiting for this to apply. So we're excited to kind of build on that momentum. The other piece that we're going to start, that I'm going to start launching, is to start to interfacing, or start to interface a bit more with the community at large. And we just launched our social media platform recently, so we can provide updates kind of where we are from a development standpoint. I also just launched a talent community, so if people go to our website and they don't see positions, they can still drop their name, their resume, and I can notify them when new positions are coming available. So kind of establishing a direct line of communication with people that are interested. And then obviously, it's really important, is our open houses and job bears. Once the hospital is built, we want to get the community in there to kind of see what it's going to look like to work within our hospital. So those are some of the pieces that we're starting to put in place right now. Once this is all said and done and we've launched the entire hospital over the next few years, we're going to have over three hundred employees that are going to be part of our hospital. So we're really excited about that with opening the doors here in January for First Patient Day. So those are some of the, some of the updates as far as from a hiring perspective that I want to share with you. And in closing, these advances in behavioral healthcare could not have been made possible without the philanthropy of diverse group of forward-thinking elected officials, donors, and volunteers who generously gave their time and resources to the Alliance for South Sound Health and made this hospital a reality, and the medical discoveries and brain disorders that will help advance a reality. Thank you.
So we'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the facility or process.
First, it's really exciting, and I mean, it's really exciting.
Yeah, it's really exciting. We're excited.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Holman?
I'm terribly excited to see this resource available. My old line of work, police work, long since retired. Jails are not the place to treat our mentally ill. Plus, it's not economically feasible to treat people in a jail. It's expensive, some two to three hundred dollars per day, per inmate, that's not going to be made better, just housed. And our jails have a quarter to a third of their inmates that are suffering from chronic mental illness. To have this resource so that our officers that are working now, that come across somebody that's having a mental episode, has a place where they feel, where that officer can feel like they can help this person, is a tremendous benefit. So I am so looking forward to seeing you come online.
We are too. Thank you. You know, it's interesting, I'm kind of, I like statistics for some reason. So I polled Washington, and sixty-four percent of the inmates are assumed to have a mental illness in the...
in the jails within Pierce County in this area. In Pierce County last year, there were 154 reported suicides. This resource is going to be, make a difference. Mr. DeCorsy?
So, in your analogy, you looked at it from an emergency room kind of a standpoint. So, will you also be looking at taking patients in who may not be in an emergency situation yet, could be on the verge of having some sort of an episode that perhaps could prevent them from reaching that point?
Absolutely. And that's really the point that we hope that we get people. And that's why I say, the right time is when that person feels that their psychiatric emergency or their illness is escalating, and we want to stabilize it before they have a first psychotic break, or a psychotic break, or they contemplate suicide, or something else that could be catastrophic.
So, can a family member refer individuals, or does that be self-referral?
No, they can refer them. The individual will either have to sign themselves in voluntarily, or if they're in imminent danger to self-others or gravely disabled, we would have to look at a commitment. But we really have skilled staff in engaging people. So, if a family member says, "You need help," we can almost always engage them through interviewing and showing them that there's a better way to come in voluntarily.
And we'll also be working with the court systems in case there's some sort of an episode there that people can use the services as well?
Absolutely. We will stay, you know, lockstep with law enforcement, emergency management systems, and the court system.
If, they were talking about the quality of applicants that they're receiving, but what I don't think I heard them say is, before there was even any hospital, the ground had been broken, but there were already people from across the country reaching out, wanting to know how they could be a part of this new facility, because people are hearing about it all over the country. It is, it's unique, you've heard me say it before, but it's unique to have MultiCare and CHI Franciscan working together, because they realize the need in Pierce County, South King County, and we're willing to put aside differences and competition, and find a way to work together for the greater good of the community and all of the philanthropic organizations, some of the cities, the county, Tacoma, Pierce County, have they, yeah? And just the opportunity to bring a facility of this quality, of this level of expertise to our community is nothing short of amazing. And I know, Councilmember Trump, I know you've asked before, but it's not in Auburn proper. It doesn't have to be in Auburn proper for it to be a benefit to this community. It's a benefit to numerous cities around here, just by the fact that it's in existence.
And I understand that, but I have always felt that our taxpayers are going to be helping out on this, because it is going to be taxpayers' money, is that it would be nice to have our own facility so that we can have our people being serviced. And that's where I come from, you know, because I know that it's going to be all of Pierce County and South King County involved in this, and you're going to be getting patients from all over the place. So, what I'm saying, I don't know if our people will be, the beds fill up very quickly, as you said, there's people already lining up to go to this place. So, are our people going to be guaranteed a bed? And I know you can't say, "Yeah, we guarantee a bed for them," but will our people be able to have a bed when it's needed?
You know, I really do appreciate your concern on two levels. One, we were going to have what's called a crisis stabilization unit, and that's basically a 23-hour op, and that moves people through very quickly. And so, it may be that it takes a few hours for us to assess them, they get them in a bed, but that's where the model of like the ED, it's like you go to the ED and they determine if you need hospitalization, and if there's not a bed available, you stay there until there is a bed available. And so, our goal is no wrong door. You know, we're here to serve the community. The other thing is, I think everybody would agree, it's good to serve people in their community, but the reality is, hospitals are very expensive, and we don't even have one in Pierce County right now. So, to start with one, you know, so that we can make it for the greater good and the collective all, is at least a start. Yes, Mr.?
So, thank you for the presentation, and...
Thank you for having us.
What is your funding plan?
So, our funding plan is, is that we have a first-year startup budget that was brought together by CHI and MultiCare and community donors. After that, as soon as we get, and we anticipate we will have it hopefully in three months, we will be joint commission accredited, and we will also have CMS deemed status. At that point, we will be billing third-party payers, we will be billing Medicaid, we'll be billing Medicare. We're looking at having programming, because we have a lot of veterans in this area, and they have special programming. So, working through some of the military contracting, and then we've set aside a reserve or a pool for what we call charitable care for those individuals who cannot pay, you know? But through those, you know, it is now parity, it's the law of the land, and an insurance plan has to provide the same level of benefit for the med surge as it does behavioral health. And so, we will be billing just like any other hospital. And with those billings, we should be able to serve all those that need to be served. Go ahead.
Now, the charitable plan, what, I'm sure you guys have already calculated out estimates. What is your estimate?
4% of budget.
4%?
And so, you have to, so if our margins are at 10%, 4% of that would go towards the charitable care. That leaves 6% for overall increase in operational costs for the following year. And, you know, those are projections, because most projections are based best on history. We don't have history, and so, this is what we call our best guess. Is there any other questions, Mr. Brown? I'm going to, can I follow up real quick on your question about charitable care? Because that's a really good question. One thing that I think's important to realize is that once somebody comes in and has no source of funding, they become fairly immediately eligible for Medicaid or Medicare because of a disability, and we will be working what's called SOAR, and that's to rapidly eligibleize that individual, to get them on some type of payer system so that they can get the help they need going forward. But it also retrospectively, you can bill and get paid for their stay. And that's why we put it at about 4%, because most people now are eligible for some type of payer system.
And that was one of, was going to be one of my questions, because with our police department, the majority that they pick up are homeless people that have mental behavior problems and drugs issues as well. And so, I was just kind of concerned about, are they going to be seen, and how are they going to be able to pay?
Will be eligible for services. Interesting, when we polled the EMD calls or the police calls, you know, I think that maybe in Auburn, it's different, but we think that they're homeless, but actually, that's not the majority of the calls for people in psychiatric crisis, is not the homeless. Any other questions? I guess not. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your presentation. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Could, there was a question, I'm sorry. Ingrid, there was a question about if there would be, could you ask the question again?
Yeah. Would it be possible, Ingrid, to get a copy of that presentation?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
We can cheer with everyone.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. One table update.
So, I will refer you to your packets. We provided you with a significant amount of information. Much of it you saw recently, I do believe it was several weeks ago. Mayor Backus emailed out some of the early recommended actions that are being discussed for One Table, looking for some feedback. Would love to get some more feedback from everyone on this, as some of these are continually being developed as we go through this process. But I'll just go quickly to the beginning of the document, which, again, just reviews the, reviews, we have a dangerous dog ordinance, Deputy Mayor. Sure.
My city phone.
That, back in December, Executive Constantine, Mayor Durkin, and Mayor Backus convened the One Table effort. And a reminder that this effort is to address the upstream or the root causes of homelessness, because what the data is telling us throughout King County is that while we are doing a pretty good job of getting people out of homelessness, we are lacking, the numbers coming in are outpacing the numbers going out, which means we're a little bit on a treadmill right now when it comes to addressing the homelessness crisis. So, on that first page, there's the introductory, which I think most of us are familiar with. But at the bottom of that first page is, again, the root causes that are being focused on are the affordable housing issue. We know simply, we can't house people if there's not enough houses, and that is an issue that, a very deeply rooted cause. The issues run behavioral health, which is very timely after hearing the behavioral health presentation, in that we do not have enough on-demand treatment, we do not have enough capacity to deal with the different either mental illness or drug problems that we're seeing out there. The child welfare system has become a root cause. We know that a large number of foster children that age out of the system exit the system into homelessness, and I think we can all decide and agree that that's just simply not okay. The criminal justice, yes?
You know, it's just not the, getting out of, you know, they get aged to get out. There's also, I ran into several homeless teens out there that I asked them why they were on the streets, and they said, "It's because they're, they come from a single-parent household. The mother did not have them included in their apartment contract." So, the manager went up to the parents and told them that either they had to leave, or they were going to raise her rent twice as much. And so, this young lady and another youth that was with her said they had to move out because they didn't want their mother to be out in the street as well. So, we may have to look into something like that and see if, you know, if it's actually happening in our city, where they're raising people's rent because their children are living with them.
Yeah, absolutely. And that would be a tenants' rights issue, that would certainly be, I mean, those things should run up the chain, absolutely, so that they can be investigated.
I'll give you the information.
Yes, please.
I ran across that also, where the granddaughter, the grandmother wanted the granddaughter in her apartment, but she couldn't because the rent would go up.
Yeah, yeah. We could get that information, we certainly will follow up on that. And the criminal justice system, yeah, again, we do know that a lot of people exit our jails into homelessness, another root cause that we would like to stem the tide there. And then, just employment, we still know that in most of the surveys and the data that we see of those that have become homeless, when asked, the number one reason that is given is a loss of job, is what kind of started the domino effect of becoming homelessness, of becoming homeless. So, those are the five root causes that we are looking at. The setup of One Table has been with three specific working groups, if you will. The Community Action Work Group, which is what you see on the next few pages, the long list of names and associations of people that are participating in One Table. You can see that their service provided, providers, electric, elected leaders, electric leaders as well. Philanthropy, you know, counseling, area support groups, housing groups, it really kind of runs the gamut. And this working group has been split up into those five different root cause areas. And we are kind of working through questions and working through the issues that are being seen on the street. And later in the document, you'll see some of the recommended strategies that have been put forward by the Community Action Work Groups. The other two groups is the elected leadership group, and that is made up of elected leaders from cities all across King County. Mayor Backus is not only representing just Auburn, but is also kind of the liaison voice between One Table and Sound Cities Association. And we have been working closely with the other cities. I know several of you have been participating in the PIC workshops and the pre-PIC workshops that we have been doing with Sound Cities Association. You know, again, finding champions, finding places where people can fit into the solution in all sorts of different ways. And then, going into the document there with the recommended action statements, and you see the six kind of bold statements that have come forward through the work around the five root causes. Obviously, the heaviest lift is around affordable housing, there's just simply not enough out there. There's well-documented numbers out there of what we are lacking in order to address the need. And again, not, and this isn't the people on the street, this is the people that need housing, need stable housing, need stable, affordable housing, and it is a big number. And we are looking for all sorts of strategies to address that need, getting more units up as quickly as possible, it's certainly not easy. And also, just a housing stabilization fund, and that is where a lot of these will cross over into several different root causes, in that, you know, what's being discovered is, for example, if a person has a mental health crisis and seeks treatment, while they are seeking treatment, they are in danger of losing their housing because they can't pay their rent, or what have you. And so, a housing stabilization fund, something of that nature to prevent, you know, again, piling on one on top of the other, a person is having a crisis, and then, once they get the help they need, they no longer have a home to go to. The on-demand behavioral health services, big need. And the fourth one, offering a comprehensive service package for all foster youth aging out of care, we'll get deeper into the document. I'm hoping you were able to take a look at most of the strategies there, but this is something more about starting earlier in the process as the, as the young person is reaching the age of aging out of foster care, of making sure that there's a transition place, in place, there is some place for that young person to go as they leave foster care. Same thing with the criminal justice system, you know, just simply having zero exits into homelessness. If a person is coming out of jail for whatever reason, exiting them into homelessness is, has proven, obviously, to be a not-good idea. And then, the employment issue, obviously, there's barriers to employment if a person has become homeless or is at the risk of becoming homeless. There are things in a person's history that cause employers to raise an eyebrow or see somebody has high risk for employment, and we have looked at a lot of different things. Councilmember Brown and I have talked a lot about reentry programs and retraining programs that are out there, apprenticeships, all those kinds of things, to ensure that people can be employable and become employable, and hopefully, find themselves in a stable place of being housed and having an income, and all of those things that we all need in order to prevent homelessness. So, I guess what I would ask of you, I'm not going to go through the rest of the document line by line. line by line, but if, again, still looking for feedback, looking for things that we can bring back to the group from this council specifically, as well as continuing to have the conversations with the other cities, the Sound Cities Association cities, so that we can, the goal is, we were told early by several groups, the service providers, the civic leadership group, which is your business and philanthropic groups, is to be bold. We need to make big asks. And, and so we've been using this graphic of, you know, pushing a boulder uphill. And we've been asked to be bolder without the U, but it does sometimes feel like pushing a boulder up the hill. But if we all get behind the boulder at the same time, we're likely going to move the needle a lot farther, a lot faster than if, you know, each city is kind of doing their own thing. And Mayor Backus and I had had a meeting with a local pastor recently who has been working with All Home. And he, you know, we like to use the phrase here, and I think, Mayor, you've mentioned it once before, we like to use the phrase, you know, if you're not on the menu, you're on the table. And he said, you know, we have to move away from the menu approach. It's not a menu, it's a recipe. And we need to put together a recipe of things that we know that will work, that we can put these things together and make something bigger and better with all of those different ingredients. And, which is why, you know, the regional effort is, we've all known, is needed. And there are things that, you know, from an elected perspective, we will be bringing forward to you, things like looking at land use policies and certain regulations and ordinances that we might be able to examine that will make a dent in the issue here in our city and that is a similar solution that other cities around us are also doing, so that together, you know, the crisis continues to.
Mr. Backus?
Just a quick one. Have we heard from any of the other cities as to their opinions about some of this and what they may be doing?
We have. A lot of those conversations has been at the Sound Cities level with the Sound Cities Association. Deanna Dawson has been working closely with, with the elected leaders in Sound Cities to see, you know, where we want to go, what we want to do. For example, you know, one thing, you know, the cities outside of Seattle, especially the South King County cities, we all know, we have, still do, it's getting a little more scarce, but we are still the most affordable place to live. And our efforts here would not necessarily be, you know, building eight or 10-story affordable housing units, but it's just simply maintaining the units that we have. Looking at policy changes, for example, working with Jeff Tate's staff, we were having a conversation earlier about, you know, tiny houses and ADUs. Well, there's state regulations that have to change before we can change our regulations to allow that kind of development. And so there's things that are lower no cost, but definitely require political will to do in some ways. And then there are other things that would require maybe a smaller consortium. We've been working with other South Sound Cities on an Affordable Housing Alliance of some sort, similar to what the East Side has with their arch model. We could stand up something similar here, we would have a different end game than the Bellevue and the East Side cities would have with their model. So those are the kinds of conversations that we're having. I guess if you're asking, is there will with the other cities to move forward on things? I would say yes. And those conversations will continue so that we can coalesce around those things that are going to make a difference.
It would be nice to get some feedback from them as well.
Sure. Yeah, I'll see what Deanna has.
To see what the other cities are saying.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
Yes, Mr. Corsey.
So Dana, Mayor, I think it may be beneficial if there's an interaction with the Affordable Housing Advisory Board on the affordable housing side. Since there's a number of items on here that are being addressed from what the Subcommittee of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board heart.
Yeah.
Looking at as a legislative agenda. And they have some legislation passed related to public land use, which is good, but also the condominium law, other types of things.
Yes.
They're kind of on the hit list now. And I think joining forces would be a real good idea. Our next meeting is June 6th. I'm going to mention that to our board chair, and that perhaps at the meeting after that, maybe we can have some representation from One Table.
Thank you.
And there is also the King County Affordable Housing Alliance, I think, that King County Councilmember Balducci is the chair of. And so we were talking last week at Sound Transit about the need to be working together on these issues, especially South King County. We, you know, there's a lot that we can do, and we've always worked together closely to ensure that we're taking care of our own.
I think the Affordable Housing Advisory Board naturally is a state board, but, you know, it's, in a sense, has the governor's ear because we report to the governor. And allowing some of those things to come forward from all these groups together as one voice would have much more impact, in my opinion, than all of us coming in separately and addressing issues.
Yeah, and I think that is extremely powerful. That is going to help a lot. And there are, there's been several versions of this document floating around. And one version that we had early also included a list of things that would be referred to existing efforts, if you will. For example, like the child welfare thing is the hardest one for us to really grapple with because that is all state-run agencies. So we don't have a ton of control over that except to, you know, push forward. We need these things to happen. Same thing a little bit with criminal justice. But, and those efforts too are going to help a lot.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Yes, and I heard you say, and I would tend to agree, that our solutions aren't going to be the same solutions as other cities. And hopefully, we don't do disastrous things like some other cities do. But it does seem to me that housing inventory is an issue everywhere. And so I thought I heard you say that we need to maintain our housing inventory. Is there a sense that we need to grow that as we know that our population is going to grow? And is that being looked at in terms of?
I think yes.
The actions are?
Yeah. And I would say, I would say it would just be a little bit further down our list than, say, a Seattle list, you know, where, you know, we have a stock that's, that is preservable, if you will. Are we going to need to add more stock to that inventory at some point? Sure, yeah.
Yeah. It's also a good point because, you know, legislature during the last session put $10 million in housing preservation, which is a good start. Needs to be a whole lot more than that, and we're going to be pushing for, again, this legislative session, for a whole lot of money related to that. But preservation naturally is extremely important because, you know, in my years of the housing authority, my job was to preserve our existing housing to a sense where we could build another 25 to 35 years of life in those units, to keep them not only affordable, but also to keep them in decent shape, so people have a decent place to live. And I think we all know there's a number of potential opportunities that we all can see with so-called affordable housing that needs to be totally preserved and maintained for the next 25 to 35 years.
Do we have a figure of how many houses, you know, affordable houses we have? You keep saying that we have a count. Do we have?
We do have some data. The latest comprehensive plan does have an affordable housing section in it. And then I do believe, is Joy still here? Joy does have some, some data as well that we can put forward as far as, I don't think it's Auburn-specific, it's region, it's kind of by region that will show us, but there...
Do we have one ourselves?
In our, the Auburn Comprehensive Plan does have an affordable housing section in it, and I'll have to take a closer look at it.
But it's not going to tell us.
Exactly, no.
How many houses there are. That's, that's not necessarily available data. I mean, we're not, we're not going around asking each individual apartment unit or home. We do know that we have affordable housing that is affordable based on the standards of the average median income in King County. We know the rents of those new multifamily projects that are going online down by lows, that's affordable housing, based on the AMI for King County. But as far as, you know, we know track across the street is market rate, but we don't have an individual.
So we don't have an inventory? As you said, we have an inventory.
Total inventory? Something that would be part of the needs assessment? Okay. Yeah, I would say, yeah, I think we have some rough numbers based on certain things, but do we have an exact inventory? I don't think so, yeah.
Nancy, you wanted to ask a question?
So the, as Dana mentioned earlier, I sent out some, all of the One Table information with recommendations that are listed on there two or three weeks ago. I would still like to get your feedback on which items on these lists you feel like you can support and which ones are absolutely non-starters for Auburn, because that is something that we are going to have to be sharing. Not every city is going to have the same ideas on what they want to do. I will, I would venture a guess that Auburn and Woodinville are going to be very dissimilar in what we are willing to do for prevention of homelessness. Nothing against Woodinville, just completely different communities. So I still need your input on those. As soon as you can get them to me, it would be greatly appreciated.
It's not part of this, is it?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Is it here, Bill?
It's all of this. Remember, all of these that were listed?
And just the last thing I would direct your attention to is the last four or five pages. One of the grand goals of One Table is to seek alignment. And alignment meaning aligning resources and ensuring that we're not duplicating efforts in, in a lot of ways throughout the region. You may have heard recently that Seattle and King County entered into a memorandum of understanding. And that is exactly what that is about, and that really kind of came from the One Table effort, and that they've, they have realized over the years that King County and the City of Seattle are oftentimes funding the exact same organization for the exact same thing. And they are looking at making sure that they're not doing that. And could that money be spent better elsewhere? And can they align their resources better so they're not layering funding on top of funding without any real forethought? So what I have done here is taken the action plan that came out of the task force on homelessness, and I added a column, and I shaded in purple where our current action plan already has some alignment with what One Table is working on. And this is something that I've put forward to the group as well, just to, you know, show, and all of the cities around us, we have been doing work around homelessness in some way, shape or form. And now it's time for us to do that work together in alignment and awareness so that our resources can be used in the most efficient way possible.
Councilwoman Backus?
Just a couple of comments. You know, we've, we've heard this term affordable housing for a long time. And I think that I've heard a phrase that came out of our mayor's office that says attainable.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you, if you consider the, the units that are over by lows that are just now coming online to some degree, you're looking at 1,200 and some dollars for a one-bedroom, 1,400 and some dollars for a two-bedroom. So I don't know whether you call that attainable, affordable, or just market value, but that's...
So that is considered affordable housing when you look at what the average median income is in King County? So 1,400 dollars per month is considered affordable at 30% of the average median income?
A lot of the people that are having problems with housing are well below that, that amount. And I think we really ought to consider, you know, that element in our thinking because it's, it's not the people that are working at Microsoft or Boeing or other places like that. Those are the ones that, that help shape that, that value. So we really need to be thinking about the people who really don't have those kind of jobs, and they're not family wage-type jobs. And some of them are working, they're working in, in fast food, they're working in several different areas. They're still homeless because they can't afford a home. They can't afford to pay rent that, that we're asking for, so...
And that's why you're seeing two to three families living in an apartment complex of two bedrooms.
Just for the council's benefit, this is the document that was going around for comments. So it's, you can recognize it from the red markings on there.
Or just use the one that, in here, I believe is, it's very similar.
It is very similar. There's a few differences on the one you have in front of you, but not a lot.
So just as a call again, so the problem we face is, you're right, we do see people that have a two-income family, and some of those people are homeless because they cannot afford an apartment. We see people that are extremely rent burdened, which means they're paying upwards of 50%, in some cases more, with their adjusted gross income for, for housing. And those are all the issues that everybody's facing of how we address that. My opinion is that we are a creature of Seattle because as the rents increase in Seattle, we all know the rents increase here. And although the mayor's right, if we look at the, the adjusted gross income, or the median, average median income for rents, it's going to affect the rents in Auburn. And the rents that you're talking about increased from 1098 a month to 1203 a month in less than 30 days. Because it's what's allowed of the average income for King County for that particular complex. The other issue we face is that when we look at affordable housing, and I've mentioned this before, it's broken down into categories. So you have a 0 to 30% average median income, which is your subsidized housing, Section 8, and public housing. And then you have the largest group, which is the 60, is the 30 to 60%. And those are people that can either go up or down on the scale at any particular time because they're either extremely rent burdened, or they don't have the income to, to maintain a place to live. And they're always at risk of becoming homeless, and that's a large group of people. Then the category that's being focused on right now is the workforce housing, which is the 60 to 80% of median income. And from King County housing standpoint side, for example, Auburn Square is one of those properties that is a reduced rent, non-subsidized, that allows people in the workforce category to be able to afford an apartment for less than $1,000 a month. But those are few and far between and very limited. And again, my opinion is that's where the majority of the housing needs are really going to need to be as we go forward, where people from the bottom of the scale can't move up, people from the top of the scale can move out, allowing the people from the bottom of the scale to continuously move up. And it's a tremendous balancing act as we go through this process all the time, and one that has been, I use the word testing stages for many, many years with no real solutions.
So I would say in Auburn, glad I think you'll probably agree, we have done, Auburn has done a very good job of 50% and above. It's that truly subsidized 0 to 30%, 0 to 40% that is lacking in just about all communities. But Auburn, you know, when we've heard former electeds in Auburn say, we've more than done our share. Well, for decades, all of the affordable housing, or at that time considered low-income housing, a lot of it was shifted to South King County. So when you hear someone say... So when you hear someone say that, it's true that there was a great deal of low-income housing that was located in Auburn. We have to make sure that we're preserving that low-income housing or affordable housing. Attainable housing, when, when we talk about that, that's more the home ownership of an attainable cost. But when we're talking about rents for those who are, they have housing insecurities, we are really good at the 50% and above. I don't think anybody would argue with us on that. But it's that 0 to 30% that we don't have a great deal of stock in.
Absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Dickerson.
So our other major problem is not with us, not with the state, not with the county, it's with the federal government. Because just for an example, in public housing, again, using King County Housing Authority as the example, King County Housing Authority has 3,306 units of public housing. That's all they can have. They cannot increase that number, except by Congress. Now, they can adjust that number by doing exactly what we did at Greenover Homes, for example, of converting the property from public housing to Section 8 project base, which means the vouchers are with the unit, not with the people. And you bank, in this case, 59 units of housing that you can do purchases elsewhere, but you can never exceed, in King County, 3,306 units of public housing because Congress has set the limit. It's a ridiculous law. It's one that's never been changed, one that's never been fixed. And quite honestly, again, my opinion, there's not a flavor in Congress for fixing that problem. You're going to continuously see the 0 to 30% being the most affected group because of that issue that's been created by the federal government.
I guess we should write our congressman.
Lots of times. More business than DC, imagine.
Okay, Mr. Pelosi.
Page 53. And this is down at the bottom of the page, 8.7. No, B, that, yeah, must be B. B.7?
B.
Okay. Looking under the white section, "The city of Auburn fully supports this project, and its partnership with King County will financially support up to 400,000 pending council approval." Can you explain that to me?
What are we looking at?
What does that mean?
That's the Arcadia House statement.
Oh, was that the Arcadia House?
Yeah, see, these are, these are the items that came out of the mayor's task force on homelessness that we did a few years ago.
Right.
So those are just updates, but...
So this needs to be updated then?
No, that's, that is...
Well, support up to 400,000. How much have we supported thus far?
Um, nothing, because they haven't started the project.
Oh, okay.
There was a point in time when they had, they were coming forward. If, this is the bathroom issue, right? So when we had to quickly identify the restroom project at Lesco.
Oh, right.
It's because the Arcadia House project had been stalled. That funding had been allocated to that project, and we had to quickly rush and find something that council could support so that we were not in trouble for not spending our funding. So there was a point in time when you had agreed to this, but it had to be rescinded when they weren't ready for the project.
I, I have an observation for the council. And John, you and I discussed it earlier over a piece of pizza. I have seen a shift in homeless in the downtown area and from Lesco Park. Shift, the, the shopping carts, the mounds of people pushing around, pulling around. I don't, I haven't seen that lately. And so that means that the carts have kind of gone away too, the shopping carts, because they've taken them with them somewhere else. So my bottom line comment is, I think that the city is getting cleaned up a little bit more, from my observation. Now, whether they're going up to Ray of Hope, I don't know.
They are.
Okay, and that's good.
And the Sundowner, which is the overnight shelter.
And that's good, you guys. That's very good. So we're making progress.
Give yourselves a little pat on the back.
That's a big thank you to council for approving the funding to ensure that that happens.
Right. So anyway, I just wanted to...
It's a good observation.
Councilmember Pelosi. Is there any more? Any more questions? Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
We'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Baggett.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think we have any other discussion items or new business, so we'll go to the matrix and revisit some of our pending projects and see if we have any dates for some of these. I think we still have a TBD under consolidated court fees.
I did not get a chance to talk to Judge Tucker. She didn't show up to the meeting. Dana?
Yes, ma'am.
Was this the homelessness update? Because there's...
No.
Okay. Is there a time and date that you are going to pick on that?
Uh, yeah, we can do it whenever, at the next special focus area.
Okay, I was just, I was just talking to Joy about setting a meeting, because we never set a meeting up when we cancel the other one. So let's try to set a time, so that way we can discuss about the date and everything.
Yeah, I'll have Antoinette follow up with you.
Thank you.
Along the same lines, we got the homelessness update. Do we have any?
That's the one we were just talking about.
Okay. I was wondering about the consolidated court fees.
Yeah, and I told you, I'll get, I'll get that, because I did not get a hold...
So that's, is that going to go back under?
Me.
You, all right. Wrong view. All right, thank you.
No, it still goes under...
Is it under muni services?
It's under muni services.
I talked to Mr. Brown, and he said that, go ahead and take it back, and I'll get, you know, get a hold of...
I mean, you had already had something underway, right?
All, all I'm saying is the topics, the topic of consolidated court fees belongs under muni services.
Yeah, that's true.
Then let's give it back to you, but I'll get the date from her, okay?
All right, that's great.
Because I've already been talking to her.
You don't want to keep switching stuff around.
You shared responsibility here.
Yeah.
I mean, we can...
That's what I wanted to do.
No, the whole process is, we can take something and move it ahead under someone else's chair.
Right.
If it's urgent or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Under finance, I think we have, still have a couple of TBDs.
Yes, still.
Any word on that?
Still TBDs, but the multi-year budget is still planned for the 11th, the next session.
Are there any...
Study session.
Are there any new items to be added to the matrix? We do have one other, that's the capital projects update. Do we have anything on that, Claude?
We just had one recently, so that's kind of been done under the general discussion items, which I think we probably should continue to do that, because that's a...
Supposed to be like an ongoing...
It's an, it's ongoing, yeah.
If you have any dates for me for the next phase of it, let me know. Thank you, thank you.
Just a reminder that you have Council Budget 101 presentation next Tuesday, June 5th, from 1 to 3. So Shelley is working on an updated presentation without the cups. So it's, it's really critical that everybody attend that meeting so that everybody is on the same page when those budget meetings occur for you in August, I believe it is.
Any other changes or suggestions for the matrix? Okay. Being no other business before the council, but the study session, I deem the meeting adjourned.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you.